You're not featured.
It really is. Here, Scott. We have held a large portion.
I might go over there.
Get out of the way for no reason.
I'll bring that up.
Doubtful.
Where are they all at? I've cleaned the night off. Ron is too. Well, this is almost scary. They're not here, it's making me wonder. That's why. Poor Justin.
What's that?
And now call the Norton City Committee Work Session Order, Monday, June 10th, 2018. Time is 7:02. Would you please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Here.
Mr. McLoane?
Here.
Mr. Kran.
Here.
Mr. Towesley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Mr. Pilat?
Here.
First item is amend appropriations. If you've had a chance to look at it, this would be ordinance 69 goes through. Finance is asking to increase the budget for legal services. This is for various litigations plus reimbursement for the Cleveland Maslin Road Fund. It's Fund 509. This will be reimbursed, but we need to fund 90% of it, so.
So, Mr. Pilat, I can help with that. So, there's been a number of litigation matters this year that have been handled by myself and then some other folks that have done some litigation matters for the city. For the eminent domain, the appropriation cases, that money's been paid out of this general fund account, but when it gets reimbursed, the 90% that comes back to the city, it goes to 509 for accounting purposes, so it's not being used to pay for legal services, that's coming out of here. So, you're advancing money, you're a little bit over budget here, but that's because you're getting 90% of it back, but it's not going to where it was spent to begin with, just because the grant funds require us to segregate and put them in one account, which is Fund 509. So, that's the reason for this ordinance, to increase it.
Anyone have any questions on this?
I'll just, last point, which is, when that money comes back in, it'll be used to be paid for the rest of the project, so that 509 money will be used to pay for other parts of the Cleveland Maslin.
Phase three or whatever.
Phase acquisition or whatever, so.
I do have one question, I don't know if you can answer it or not, Mr. Mark. Any idea about what the time period is, we get that 90% back?
I don't know the answer to that. We can find out.
I know in the past, it's been usually within 90 days, but.
I know it's a monthly report, I don't know how quickly it comes back, though, so it's a monthly request.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, then I will move to add this to council's next agenda. I would assume that Mr. Messner is going to want to get this resolved, so, with emergency, and we'll discuss waving readings, depending on timeline here, next week.
Sure, and I'll leave that to council. I know we were getting it on now, there wasn't necessarily a rush, but if you can get it done before break, I think that was the idea, introducing it this week.
A second. Motion second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
All right. Next item on tonight's agenda is a street paving contract, and that falls under finance. If you looked at the name of the various bidders, Perrin Asphalt was the best bid at $338,977, and the roads include Oak, Long Drive, Pleasant Drive, Albert Street, East Frontage Drive, Helmick Avenue, Tapper Road, Nitz Drive, and South Haimtown. And, as I said, that's in the amount of $338,977, and I'm not sure the timeline on when that would begin. So.
Scott, can I ask about one of the roads?
Sure.
Oak Street, I know it needs done and everything, but wasn't that kind of done when we did the sewers that one time? It wasn't too long ago, was it?
I don't know that they repaired the whole road.
Oh, they didn't repair the whole road?
Not that I understand.
Okay. Because I thought that's kind of.
That's what we've adopted since then, but at that point in time, I don't think.
Okay, it was just kind of like a partial fix?
Yeah.
Okay.
And is this, is this through the county, or is this on our own?
This one was on our own. We felt that it was in the city's best interest at this point in time to go out and retain some bids separately from the county. We didn't feel that we were necessarily getting a discount set that we originally thought that we were going to get when we went to county, so we wanted to go ahead and open this up a little bit with the county. Typically, what you see are larger paving companies are the ones able to bid on those projects with the county. This here gives the smaller companies the opportunity, and we're hoping that we're going to see better pricing come through the smaller bids, the smaller companies.
So, does that mean we're going to do anything with the county, or is this it?
I'm not sure if Mr. Fowler has.
Yeah, there's a portion of the road program will be completed through the county contract, and a portion will be through this separate bid. As Mr. Pilat mentioned, the idea was to see if they can get a better economy of scale for these smaller projects, bidding them out separately, and I, Mr. Fowler could provide the information for you for next week, but they were able to achieve savings by bidding it out separately from, instead of doing them under the county road program, we were able to get some more lane mileage done, but I'll have, I'll make sure he provides that to you for next week.
Do we probably got a little bit more control, too?
A lot more control, but more bang for the buck, too.
So, we'll have another list of roads.
Yeah, I'll make sure you have the list of what's county versus what's local, and any other questions you have.
Could you, maybe you don't know, but could you tell me how Reimer Road was funded?
I know that's an ongoing conversation, I defer to Mr. Fowler to answer that one. I know it's through the county program, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it's okay, so I know it's through the county program, I know that money's been budgeted, we had an ordinance that authorized the application, I have to go back, and I just didn't get a chance before the meeting to look to see if that also authorized the agreement, the contract, for the county program, so I just, I just don't know the answer to that.
I'm not able to find anything, and I've looked and looked.
For the county program, this year?
For the Reimer Road paving.
Well, whether it was included in the county list?
In anything, it's been worked on, and now, it's already had work done on it, and I've been able to find nothing.
Through the county program, we'll get your answers, I know that was a question Mr. Gaynor had, so we'll get some answers.
And I know that he had reached out to a few people at county to find out, you know, what took place there, whether they just.
I'm sorry, let me interrupt, Scott, I'm sorry. Who reached out to county?
I'm sorry, Mr. Fowler, reached out to somebody at county, asking them follow-up questions based off, like what you said, you know, what, what was criteria for doing the portion of the road in Norton there? What authorization was this part of the original piece of the contract? So, he's looking into it and should have an answer, I would hope, here, probably tomorrow or the next day.
Is that a county road? I can't.
Without a map, I don't know.
Tough to speculate, I think we'll get the answers for next week, it's the best we can do at this point, I don't have any answers for you.
Well, it's not costing us anything.
What's that?
It's not cost us anything.
I'll have answers for you next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and with most bids with contractors, they, they have a 10% plus or minus, so the contract with Perrin would be plus or minus, so the total price on that would actually be, we'd be approving up to $372,874.70. The bid itself came in, as I said, the 330, what was it, 337, 338,977. So, anyone have any questions?
I would just like to say, what's our game plan for next year, because we're going to have to start talking, we're not spending enough money on these roads to get them done, and I think, I think when Mr. Fowler came in, we were going to start doing some discussions on how to do that, and I don't want this to be over with because we're starting this program here, but I would like to see us start talking about next year and how to, because I just don't think the, you know.
This isn't the complete list.
No, I understand it, but I really think we got to start talking about it, we've always said we would.
Yep.
I just don't want it to go to the wayside, because now we're talking about this year, and I think we should talk about it soon. I mean, let's, let's not put it off too long.
Yeah, I will, go ahead and add that to council's next committee.
Because you all were with us when Fowler came in, and he said this was, we were going to make me do some kind of, get some input from the public of how to raise some monies.
Yeah, because I thought this year, we discussed it earlier this year, and we were looking at, I want to say like 800 or 900,000, but don't quote me on that, for roads this year, but, yeah, we had discussed.
And again, we're in the same, we're in the same boat as every other city, too, so, it's not like we're the only ones.
Right, ours just makes it a little more difficult because of not having enough business within the city to, to help take care of all the road miles, but.
Exactly.
The next item on tonight's agenda might be a possible option for some of that funding, so we'll talk about that one next, but any other questions on this one?
Just to add to Dennis's comments there, I'd like to see us talk about this also, and mainly, not just how much we're providing, but where it's coming from.
Well, yeah, that's what we'd be looking at, the funding.
We have to really look for the, a source, a permanent source of funding.
Yeah. All right, if there's no more questions, then I will move to add ordinance, this will be ordinance 70, I believe, onto next week's agenda, with the emergency.
A second.
Motion second to add the contract with Perrin Asphalt, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
The next item, Blue Line Solutions Agreement, this will fall under Mr. McLoane, and we also have the chief here.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President, yeah, the chief was talking to me last week, and he'll, he'll probably explain to you all about 224, how the accidents have just risen over the, just this year, probably more than all of last year already, and he's really concerned, and I think this is something we need to do before we see fatality, and the chief's going to explain what, what he has researched.
But, thank you very much. As you all know, the construction zone on I-76 is from roughly east of 261 to just west of State Street, and in that zone, especially eastbound, you have two contraflow lanes, which means there's only one lane available for each lane of travel, so there's no safe place to stop any vehicles in that area. My officers have tried to set up radar up on, say, Cleveland Maslin Road Bridge, and try to stop a vehicle, and get them to exit onto Barber Road, they've tried to do that, and you can't get them back on 76, so then it becomes a hassle there. Our, our accidents have risen tremendously over the last five years. If you look at our statistics, which are on the city's website, especially from 2016, between 2013 and 2016, we were roughly responding to about 300 accidents per year, between, anywhere between 315 and 326 in 2015. In 2016, right around the time that the, the project started, it rose to 382, and then all of last year, in 2017, 525 accidents, which is roughly about a 35% increase. I can tell you, just this year alone, we've responded to 263 crashes as of today. It's not a safe place for officers, or firemen for that matter, to go out and respond to, to these accidents. The majority of these accidents are all speed-related. We had an accident two weeks ago where a semi struck five vehicles in that contraflow lane. We measured 311 feet of skid marks from that semi. They're going way too fast in that area. We have got to do something to slow them down before we get a fatality out there. We found a company called Blue Line Solutions, and they have a radar lidar unit, which is a laser handheld unit, much like the ones that my officers carry right now. What I would propose is I'd like to send them up on, on one of the three bridges, whether it be Easton, Cleveland Maslin, or Clark Mill Road bridges, where they can, you know, safely spot a speeder, so that the officer would actually witness the violation. Once they activate the unit, the unit has a camera on it, it captures the vehicle, the front license plate, should capture a picture of the driver as well, and the company will send a civil violation to the owner of the vehicle. I've already spoken with the company, what I'd like to do is, you know, if we decide to go with them, I'd like to get some signs made, post them on the interstate, give them plenty of notice that we've got a traffic camera, a manned traffic camera with a police officer, and we'll be issuing civil violations to speeders.
And, so, everyone understands, a civil violation is not a moving violation from a legal perspective, as far as points on the license, things like that, it's nothing more than a fine for breaking the laws of the highway.
Correct. Yes.
Chief, would these be used anywhere else other than 76?
No, no, the ordinance, I believe specifically states that.
Yeah.
I, I do not like the, some people refer to them as cop in a box, where they sit them up at certain areas, there's no police officer present. With this unit here, the officer actually witnesses the violation, he sees it, he activates the unit, he just, we just don't have a safe place to stop these motorists.
And, as the chief and I have been talking for the last couple of weeks here, and Mr. Fowler and myself, we've been looking at, you know, we're hoping that the signs are going to slow down a majority of the people. Those who fail to, I guess.
Heed the signs.
Heed the signs, then, obviously, they're, those will be the ones that get caught by something like this, provided, as the chief said, you know, this would be a manned unit, and, I mean, we're not going to have an officer standing out on a bridge all day long, every single day. We had talked about possibly posting some times in the local papers and stuff like that, to try to give people a heads up. We talked about some other things, I don't know what.
I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to putting it on our Facebook page, I don't know if any of you have gone to the police department's Facebook page, it's roughly about two months old, but, you know, I posted some things on there today, I've been amazed, Safety Town started, I mean, we're, I think we're up to 800 likes, you know, social media is the wave, so I would not be opposed to posting, you know, warnings, just like they do with the OVI checkpoints, hey, on Monday, Monday afternoon, between, you know, 1:00 and 5:00, you know, we'll be doing speed enforcement on 76.
One thing that I was concerned with is, last thing I want, is Norton residents getting tickets. It's not about trying to extract money out of Norton residents, so I want everybody to kind of be aware of what's going on, so they know and they're aware, and hopefully ultimately, always reduce their speed down through the construction zones there, and they are construction zones, so fines are doubled, so, a normal $160, I mean, that's going to cost you $320. So, the speeders that travel the route every single day, they're paying 320 bucks out of your pocket, every time, you're going to get the message pretty quick to, to slow down, so.
Scott, what I would say is, I would have to say probably, there might not be that many Nortonites there, there could be a lot of out-of-towners or some, others in other cities.
Right. Let me ask a question. I'm kind of looking at the performance, and, and really, it's not so much about collecting fines, it's really about the deterrent.
Correct.
And I think all of us get that, but for something where there is a notice of a fine sent, and it's not being paid, I'm wondering about track record of that in the past, other areas, how that's performed as far as fines, are they being collected, or does anyone really care? That's one part of it.
In Chicago?
And the other part is, I'd like to know how much of a deterrent, in other words, how have we saved lives, crashes, things like that, what's their track record, is there a percentage of reduction that has gone along with that in other areas? What's like the percentage of reduction of accidents?
I can probably get that from you.
And that's something that the chief and I also discussed, was monitoring how many crashes there are, so.
I've got a couple of questions, did you want to speak first?
I want to answer Mr. Kran's first question about the collection rate, and so the company, Blue Line Solutions, would actually, if you the citation on behalf of the city, it would collect and then remit funds to the city. If they can't collect on their own, they, they send them to Municipal Collection Services, which is a company out of Chicago, it's a nationwide collection firm, and they've told us, because we asked that question in our in-person meeting with them, they've told us they have about a 96-ish percent collection rate, based on, based on their history, so.
I'm surprised.
Pretty, it seemed high for me, but that's what they're telling us, so.
And the ratio is 60/40, 60% would come to the city, 40% to.
And, right, and the owner of the vehicle has, you know, has a process that they can go through, they can request a hearing. You know, I've spoken with Judge Fish from Barrow County Municipal Court, they are in support of this, they realize of the issues that are going on. When I explained it to them, just like I did with you guys, that it was a manned unit, you know, he was all for it. I can tell you, I think in your packet, you have a letter from Brian Thomas, from AAA, president of AAA, and the Summit County Traffic Safety Committee, they have not supported any of the unmanned units, but he did issue me a letter saying that he would support our efforts on I-76 with a manned unit.
I think you just answered my question, chief. We're not going to be setting up anything, will be, any disputed citations will be sent to Judge Fish, is that correct?
Not any, no, there's going to be a process.
No, I'm saying, it says in here, Exhibit B, number three, it says, "City shall provide a judge or hearing officer in court facilities to schedule and hear disputed citations."
Yes.
That'll be Barbara County Union.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I know.
Mr. Towesley?
I've got a few comments, a couple of questions. First of all, within the legislation, it points out it's a $200 fine, does it not?
Yes.
And also, I want to make it clear, if someone's going 1 mile an hour over the speed limit, we're not targeting those.
I'm sorry, I should have, I should have addressed that. So, the speed limit right now on 76 is 55. I think we would be comfortable at 10 miles an hour or more over, so we would not start issuing these until 65.
Okay, I just want to point that out, that so people don't think you're.
Correct.
And we have that ability with the company to set those parameters, so they know the ticket only over, the 10 miles per hour over, so they're not generating tickets below that amount.
I am generally not in favor of this type of thing, but what the chief's speaking about, I think, his whole responsibility is safety of citizens, and I appreciate him getting a letter from AAA, doing his homework, and seeing the accidents, if we can make this very clear, I can support this, but one thing I would request, I know the legislation says it's on 76, I would appreciate it if the legislation said on 76 and only on 76, and I would also appreciate if somewhere in the legislation, it stated that this would expire when the project expires, that this would not stay in Norton beyond the scope of this project.
And I think that, that's what's intended, so I don't think there's any problem changing that, and I will tell you that the company has a standard five-year term, and we've told them that five years isn't acceptable, we're expecting two years for construction, and so two years was the term, but I agree, once it's, we can write it so once the construction's over, they're not going to be used.
I totally agree, those points both need added to the ordinance.
Sure.
One other comment I'll just make is, a question I was going to ask, which was answered, because I had concerns, this is a handheld device, correct?
Correct.
So, in other words, if there's an emergency somewhere else in the city, this does not hamper the officer from immediately responding?
Correct.
Okay.
These, these units are, remain the property of the company we're contracting with, correct?
Yes, the, they will be owned by Blue Line Solutions, and they will be given to us at no cost. At any time, if, if one of the units fails, we can send one back. I've requested for two, only because if one officer's out using one, we can have one back at the station, charging, you know, doing whatever, but the units will cost nothing to us.
And the one question I had, chief, is, is there like a computer chip in there or something that you got to send to them, or?
Yeah, what it does is, once the violation is, is captured, it goes into an iPad, when the officer sets up on one of the bridges, the locations will be predetermined, so the only thing he does is he, he will, he will calibrate, or the officer will calibrate the unit, once he leaves, at our back station, just like he does with the radar units now.
Okay.
Gets out to the, to one of the bridges, they're predetermined, the iPad that is attached to this actually has a GPS unit in it, so it will know where he's at, all he's got to do is click the button, say he's on the Cleveland Maslin Road, he's going to be conducting radar on the eastbound lanes. So, once he starts that, he captures, say he captures five violators, at the end, when he's done, before he leaves there, he just clicks the submit button, those violations get sent to Blue Line Solutions.
They're quick.
And the process starts, yes.
And where would these officers be positioned at? I mean, are they physically going to be standing up on the bridge, and if that's the case? And if that's the case, any concerns with safety in that area?
No, actually, we went to all the bridges. If an officer's posted, say, at Cleveland-Masslin Road, as long as he's got his overheads on, or at least his backlights on, he'll be wearing a traffic safety vest. He can get up right next to the fence area there, and that's where he can start looking for violators.
And I express the same sentiment as a few others here. Originally, this, something similar to this was requested several years ago. And at that point in time, I was adamantly opposed to it, just because there was no, no real need for it, because the construction wasn't going on. So during the construction period, I mean, I'm starting to see a need for it with the increase in crashes. Obviously, you're always gonna have that, but when you throw the added speeds in with those, then the severity becomes much, much more concerning.
I have with me a sample citation, if you'd like to take a look at it, from the company.
Sure.
What is this actually costing us?
The unit costs us nothing.
Do we have to pay the company anything, or it's just this percentage basis?
Based on the percentage of collections.
Okay.
So they take a 40% split on the ticketed amount, and that's it. No upfront costs, no ongoing costs, other than the 40% split.
And then as I see it, they also charge for the violator paying it either through the internet or over the phone.
They have a service fee.
Service fee, yeah.
Yeah, they have a service fee.
And there's no quota. There's no nothing like that, so.
No quota.
Before anybody starts thinking that, there's none of that.
If we have a day like today, where we were busy, you know, we may not have anybody out there today.
That was gonna be my next question, is how often, I know you're not gonna give me a schedule. How often are you actually gonna be able to have somebody on a bridge so the people coming through there will know they might get a ticket if they're running over 50, 65 miles an hour? Are we gonna be able to have him up there often enough to where it'll convince them to slow down?
My goal is for the first, say, 30 days, is to kind of test out the waters and try to get somebody up there. You know, minimum staffing for us is three officers. You know, I may take a month and schedule four on first and seconds and send an officer up there.
What fund do the collections go into for the city?
So there's a waterfall, like attorneys like to make waterfalls. So the idea would be, I sent an email a little bit earlier, it was a little bit before council. So the concept would be, the first $200,000 of collections, assuming there would be $200,000 of collections, would go to Fund 140, Police Equipment, and that would fund that first. Then if you fund $200,000, then you go to the next. $250,000 goes to Fund 110, which is the DARE fund. And whether or not we use the DARE fund or a different fund, DARE may just be for the federal grant. We had to confirm that with Mr. Messner, but I wasn't able to confirm that today before I sent it out. But the idea would be to fund Norton's portion of an SRO officer. And so that next $250 would fund that portion. And so, as I mentioned in my email, this wouldn't be, we're doing an SRO 100%. This is, we have the funding in place. Should we come to an agreement with the schools and get to an equally agreeable funding share between the city and the schools, that we have that funding available to pay an officer to do the SRO position? Then after that, it'd go 60% towards roads, 20% towards rainy day fund, 20% towards compensated absences and 27th pay, just building reserves, so we have that moving forward. And that'd be up to $1 million. And these sound like big numbers, so this is more just us thinking, not saying we'll get there, but if we did get there, that's how it would go. And then after that, for the rest of the time, it'd go 60% to roads, again. 30% to a general fund account to fund police capital improvements, and 10% for compensated absences, 27th pay. And that's just our initial, as we discussed it internally amongst the administration. That was our, it funds capital improvements, it funds the police equipment, it funds an officer for the schools, which we know is a priority, roads, which is a priority, trying to hit all the, I think, big-ticket items for the city, and then building some reserves, which is always good fiscal management, so.
Except we have to keep in mind that it's only gonna, this is only gonna be here for a couple of years.
Correct, correct. And if you could build a surplus, then you can maybe, as Mr. McGloone mentioned, if you want to hit roads harder next year, or you wanna, you know, overfund them for a few years, it'll maybe get you a temporary funding source to be able to do that, just to buy some time.
As I was, as I understand it, we're actually not gonna be paying for our officers to be standing on that bridge. That we're gonna be reimbursed their time that they're there? Is that what I'm reading with what I had read here?
I don't think. I think they had agreed to pay overtime.
Yeah.
Oh, overtime or part-time officer pay? Hours, outside of the normal working hours, okay.
So I guess, kind of building, it was a separate question originally, but kind of building on what her question was. So if you go from three employees, and for a month you kind of, you schedule a fourth, then that's just gonna increase the police payroll budget?
Correct.
Is there any way to use maybe the first portions to reimburse that portion of the officer's time spent out there doing this?
That's gonna be a question, I think, for Mr. Messner, on how that works.
Yeah.
And where the revenue is gonna go.
Right. I don't want to overinflate the figures for future budgets, I guess is where I'm going with it.
I agree.
Mr. President, I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
On the draft ordinance number 72, Section 9, Signs. I'll give you just a second to get there. The first sentence says, "The city's street department shall erect signs on every highway." Is that really the intention, or does that mean every highway that's involved with the cameras?
So.
I guess the point I'm getting to, the more we can let the public know this is what we're doing, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah. So my understanding, and Chief can correct me if I'm mistaken on this, the company will provide the signs that we need to place. State law has the requirements for where signs have to be posted. I have to recheck the statute to see if it's just on 76. I understand your point, which is, if we put them on 76, 21, 580, anywhere we can to let people know as they're coming in that they're potentially going to be targeted, I get that point, but I'll find out the answer.
Right. My goal, and I think our discussion was, is that you do it at the city entrance, you post a sign there. So if it's eastbound, it would be at the city limits. I'd like to do one just east of 21 for people coming from 21, getting onto 76. And then that third one, probably anywhere between Cleveland-Masslin and Clarkmount.
I guess a further point would be, we've gotta make sure this specifies what you're saying, then. You know what I'm saying?
Right, right. I understand.
Because I'm with Paul, you know, I want to make sure that everybody coming through this area understands that there is photo enforcement, number one. And if they're coming off of a side highway or something like that, I want to make sure that there's a sign somewhere after even a on-ramp, before the camera.
Right.
And after the sign. I want to make sure people have every opportunity to see the signs to make sure they know.
Right. And that was one of the things that I had discussed with Judge Fish, too, was that we needed to make sure it was properly signed.
Kerry, can you?
Chief, are you gonna be focusing mostly on the one lane, or will you be both sides?
We'll end up doing both sides, but we'll probably primarily focus on the eastbound, because that seems to be the problem area for us.
Just curious, if a motorist goes over 10 miles an hour, do you know what the ticket could be?
Two hundred. So it's a fixed 200, so it's actually less than the criminal, right, in the criminal side, if you're in a construction zone. It's gonna be well in excess of $200, in excess of $300.
All right.
But this one is, and it would never, to Mr. Towsley's point, maybe we'll even take it out. If it's not a construction zone, it's $150. If it's in the construction zone, it's 200. We're only ever intending to use it within a construction zone. So we could probably take that other penalty out.
Okay.
But that's the idea. Fixed, flat, $200 fee.
Okay.
When we're sitting here and you're looking at how you're thinking about allocating the funding out. Now, if we put this in a police fund, Fund 140 or 110 or whatever, even though we're talking, we wanted to build up the roads program somehow, using some of these funds, once it goes into an allotment like that, we can't really take it back out. We'd have to redo the ordinance altogether.
Yeah. And we can go over those funds and stuff like that. I mean, I think Mr. Markey's point was, those were just some, some that they had thrown out there originally. I mean, initially, I mean, off the top of my head, I would think helping support the SRO. First, you know, just in light of everything that's happened in this country lately. I mean, to me, that would be one of the most important things that we could probably do as a city, is making sure that, you know, we're working with the schools to get somebody in there to make sure that there's somebody on the grounds of the school. And then once the school figures out and gets things resolved with their finances, then we can, you know, come to that agreement. But to me, I would think that would be the most important. But that's kind of, I guess, getting the cart before the horse here. Right now, it's just looking at whether or not we want to actually have cameras on the highway to slow people down.
Well, I have to say, I've been fought against the red light cameras heartily. But I totally agree with Paul. This is a different case. That road is a mess. We need some help. We've had two of our own cruisers, one, a brand new one eliminated, another one hit. There was, what, a county or sheriff or somebody that also had vehicle hit. We've got our road people out there. We've got our police officers out there. We've got our fire people, our emergency people out there. And that's just looking at it from the city point. When you look at the private way, and as long as this is just for the construction time, and we're using, the officers are there, it's, it's all about safety. And I have to go along with that.
Anything else? Anyone have to say?
Chief, there was other things that we had discussed. Were you able to find out any information?
Which one?
With the Norton residents, with the safe, with the cameras?
Actually, no, because once, once the officer hits submit, it goes directly to Blue Line Solutions.
Anything else to add, Chief?
No, I want to thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, with that, I'd like to put ordinance 71 and 72 for next week's agenda. I really would like to spend a second and third and get this thing moving, so. I need a second.
I'll say.
I think I need Scott or Paul. Scott.
I'll second.
Close.
Roll call.
Mr. McGloone?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Towsley?
Yes.
Not sure. I'm totally convinced on it yet, but I think it definitely needs to go to a full vote of council, but, so.
Yeah.
All right. Next on tonight's agenda, the T-21 legislation, that would be under Mr. McGloone's safety.
Yes, I think everyone got the ordinance in their packet. Was it in there?
Yes.
Was it? Yeah.
And I just wondered if anyone, I know this is from the other night. I can see it's kind of like half and half. I'm with council, so I was hoping to get some information on some of the people that were on the fence a little bit, and see how they felt about it.
They made the changes that I asked for.
Okay. Yeah, we added the verbiage in there that if you are an active military member, you have a military ID, you would be exempt from this. You would still be able to purchase within the city.
Anything else to add, Dan?
Just to partner with us, Summit County Health District has sent a representative just in case there's any other questions that I might not be able to answer, which is quite possible. But I think it's a good idea. That's why I brought that forward. And I would like to recommend we move it to next week's agenda.
Yeah, and I think on this one here, we're gonna go three readings on this one.
I would think so.
Yes.
I'd like to just add one more thing. With adding the military thing, this actually makes me even stronger against this. I believe the military fights for equal rights for everybody. And separating them is kind of counter what they actually stand for. So that's just another point that I don't appreciate. And I just want to remind council one more time that this is a $150 fine on our retailers, simply because they exist. And I know if I was a retailer, I wouldn't be real pleased about that. So it doesn't, it's not business friendly.
If I could, to Paul's response there, if I don't mind. Paul, you're right, they'll be paying a $150 fine, I guess if that's the figure. But all they have to do to avoid that fine is not to sell to minors.
No, Mr. Gainer, that's a $150 fee, just in order for them to.
Oh, oh, yeah, the permit, you mean. Oh, sure.
This goes to the health department to help with the enforcement.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you was talking about a fine.
No, those are beyond.
And I think that $155 was to help get people out there to see if they would try to sell for that. That was what that fee's for.
To fund in order for enforcement.
As I stated originally, when the government starts stepping in and taking away certain liberties that... I can ride, for example, I can ride a motorcycle with no helmet. But when I get in a car, I have to wear a seatbelt. They use the cost of insurance and the cost of healthcare to kind of justify the fact that I've gotta wear a seatbelt in the car. Same would apply to a motorcycle. I mean, if I don't have a helmet on, if I'm fortunate enough, or maybe not, but if an individual would be fortunate enough not to die, then they're also gonna have medical bills. So they're taking certain things away from people. They're taking certain choices away from people. This 18-year-old that they say isn't fully mature enough to be able to make decisions on what may harm them and what may not, still has the right to vote for our president. Still has the right to vote for each one of us. I don't agree with taking those liberties away from people. But I will, from this committee, I will vote to put it on next week's agenda if that motion is made. So council, as a full council, can have a voice to represent the individuals within their ward or if they're large throughout the city.
I agree with what you said, Scott, but you know what? When your wife's a nurse, and what I hear every day, what she sees.
My wife's a nurse.
And you know exactly, that makes you turn the other way, too.
Yep.
So.
So if I may, first of all, there's all kinds of fees to do business.
Yes.
There's, this $150 fee is nothing new. There's fees to open a store. There's fees to continue to do business. There's all kinds of fees. So this is nothing different than anything else. It's not a fine, it's a fee. You can call it a fine, because that, you know, that sounds better, but it's a fee. Secondly, just reminding everyone, this isn't taking away an 18- to 21-year-old's right to smoke. to smoke. That's not what this does. If they want to smoke, they can still smoke. They just can't go in and buy the cigarettes. And, you know, we have curtailed all kinds of behaviors that we have seen have been destructive. The perfect example is raising the drinking age from 18 to 21. That's the perfect example. I mean, the science, the statistics, that when you're raising that drinking age from 18 to 21, motorcycle or automobile deaths went down. Insurance costs went down. That's just the fact of living in a civilized society. That's what we do. So, yeah. The type of legislation is nothing new.
Right. Nothing new, but... You know, if somebody is drinking and driving, okay, now they're impacting others. And if I choose to smoke, me being idiot that I was, I suffered lung cancer, you know? I lost the major side of my left lung. I've paid that price, but that's still, I don't feel that you can continue to take things away from people. Yeah, it doesn't take the right to smoke away. It just says, oh, well, you can't buy it here in Norton. You can go over here to Wadsworth. Go ahead and buy your cigarettes, or you can buy your cigarettes through the internet, but you can't buy them here in the city. So we're just going to continue to lose, you know, more and more dollars being spent here in the city. I mean, when I would go in and buy cigarettes, it's usually not the only thing I would buy when I went to the store. You know, I would be buying pop or chips or whatever. You know, there's other items that go along with it. And again, you know, I'm opposed to it, but that's just my thoughts on it, but...
Mr. President, I think I may have mentioned this the other day, but just to add, a lot of the deterrent value, which we've seen from the studies, has been deterrent for the 15 and 16-year-olds to get access to it because they went to school with the 18 and 19-year-olds, they have relationships with them. And because they don't have access to it, or not free access, limits their access as 18 and 19, 20-year-olds, that 15 and 16-year-old group is less apt to have free access to those smoking apparatus, not just cigarettes, smoking apparatus. So it keeps it out there a little further, hopefully to a time when they can make better decisions, but we really don't want to see them starting at such an early age. It's a bad path, and you've experienced that.
Okay.
Really, everything's been about said. I agree with the fact that I'm not in favor of this. I understand what everybody says as far as going to help with the health issues, perhaps by eliminating these people being able to buy it, and I don't really buy into that full sales job that's being presented. I think they should be able to do, if they're allowed to smoke them anyway, what's the point? To keep them from going and buying them and then to say that, well, it's for the school kids. Well, it's not even legal to get drugs, but how many of the school kids are on them? There's not been any deterrent for that. We still have a lot of them using things that they ought not be using, and they can't even say they can go buy it down at the corner store, have their 18-year-old friend get it for them down at the corner markets. I just don't get into that. I won't be supporting this in any way, even since they did add the military. As a matter of fact, it kind of makes me think if, is this not even biased in its own way of saying, if you're in the military, you can do it, which I know I stated, they're out there fighting for us, they should be able to do it. Well, you can be a police officer, you can be a social or a security guard, you can be putting your life in danger many ways at 18. And as Mr. Pilat stated, you're out there voting. You're putting people in office, you're making decisions on policy, policies like this. So I think you ought to have the choice of being able to buy the cigarette, and you ought to have, and I know you say it's not going to do anything to the people that would buy it and give it to the minor, but couldn't you bust them for delinquency to a minor? Chief, if you were to get something that was illegally, like alcohol or anything, can't you get somebody for selling or giving cigarettes to a minor?
I don't think that's the same thing.
Yeah, well, it's not illegal to sell to someone who's 18, cigarettes to someone who's 18. So there's a little bit of a difference.
But if it...
Or selling to someone under 18, then yes.
Well, no, I'm saying the, if we put this in effect, or even I go out and get cigarettes down at the corner store, and I go over and I give it to the 15-year-old, isn't that delinquency aiding? So we do have laws in place that you can enforce that somebody's older for that. No, I'm just, I don't buy it, I won't be supporting it.
But this isn't about 15 and 16-year-olds giving cigarettes. The point I was trying to make is that it's not illegal to smoke when you're 18, 19, or 20. It's illegal to smoke when you're 15, 16, and 17, as I recall. And so this isn't about that. Those are two separate issues. What this issue is, is that you're not allowing the 18, 19, 20-year-old to buy them. It is not illegal for them to smoke them, and therefore, it's not illegal for someone to give them to them. It's always been and will still be illegal for someone to give cigarettes to a 15, 16, or 17-year-old.
But they're saying it's a deterrent for, so that to keep them from smokes, starting smoking, so that their little older friends aren't giving it, but no, I just, I can't go along with this. Well...
Just for the public's knowledge, real quick, this is all tobacco products, whether it's chew, whether it's vaping, anything that's associated with it, tobacco.
Anyone else have anything else? Okay, with that, I'd like to get ordinance 73 for its first reading next week.
As I said, I'll move it on to council's full agenda. I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
No.
All right. Next item on tonight's agenda, park restroom quotes. Mr. Gainer?
Thank you.
Mr. President, I spoke to Justin today via email, and he indicated that you're having some problem getting the quotes.
It's not that we're having a problem, it's that it was just last week, and sometimes things don't move at light speed. So they're working on getting the quotes. Mr. Hess is doing that. He's a lot of his other stuff he's doing, but he's working on the quotes and is trying to get them. But the issue that did come up was the, and I know you're questioning it, but the fact that it appears that the restrooms are below grade of the sewer that serves these buildings. And so potentially, a grinder pump would be needed to pump the waste back up to get to the gravity system, so.
My question to you, and I think you got the email, was did we have someone that actually checked that elevation to see if it was lower than this elevation, or is somebody just saying, I think it's too low?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if Mr. Hess did when he was working through that.
Because I think that's sort of a...
You could look on GIS map, and it'll show you the elevation levels.
No, it won't, Scott, I'm sorry. It won't tell you, it won't tell you the elevation other than the elevation of the ground level. The ground level doesn't mean anything. This over here could be down 12 feet, and that could be down 2 feet.
Right, but if you know the elevation there, and you can look back at when we put the sewer in right here.
So I think the point is, we can get an answer to that. I don't have an answer for you right now. I can find out.
That's all I'm asking.
I'll forward it to Mr. Hess and ask him how that determination was made.
Yeah, I'd like to know how it's, because I truly feel that there are people who do not want the restrooms, and that they're throwing stumbling blocks in front of it. That's the way I feel. And I'm sorry that I feel that way, but I think that's the way it is. And there are, I've got letters here from children even in grade school that knows it would be nice to have the restrooms and correct to have the restrooms in these facilities. And we've bypassed Loyola because it's a legitimate concern that we can't do it there monetarily. But I don't believe there's any reason why we can't do it down here, and I'm just, I would rather not hear a lot of quotes coming up here that's outrageous, is what I'm getting at. And I would like to have, I'd like to have proof, I hate to say it that way, but proof that we need this, this, and this before we can do that, because that's not a great deal of expense. And again, I want to say it over and over again, so whoever did it to begin with understands how stupid it was to take those restrooms out anyway. Those restrooms should have been left in there no matter what, and to avoid putting them back is just another bad decision. So I want to see this followed through with, and I'm looking at you, Justin, because you're the only one here that's involved in this. I know it's not your problem.
I think I'm offended.
Yeah, you're catching hell for no reason. I'm just saying, I apologize, I'm not talking to you...
I'm happy to fire back, but I'm not sure I...
I know. I'm just saying, I don't...
You know, the comments, I understand that, yeah, there are people that are probably, that have appeared to be against opening these restrooms back up, but they're not going to feed false information that is easily attainable and tell you that, you know, something's needed if it's not. I mean...
That's not what I'm saying.
They would be setting themselves up.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, I want every avenue checked. I don't want just to pull it out of the air and say, yeah, wrong. I'd like to know, is it actually wrong, or is it another case of some other things that's come up about pricing and such? And I'm not going to go into all these. All I'm saying is, I would appreciate facts.
And I'll make sure that you get those from...
Thank you.
...the administration. Any new business? Topics for next work session? Throw this one on there. We had the one earlier to throw on there.
The street and road program?
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Two quick things. One is, we had a complaint from several residents about the entranceway to, yeah, Golf Course Drive, which is going to be worked on, that's going to be repaired, and I kind of know a rough timing. But beyond that, Golf Course Drive is up to the pump station. Beyond that is a private drive, is my understanding.
Correct.
There were two private drives in Norton years ago that were taken over by the city, and I don't know the circumstances, I'm trying to find out.
If I may, in order for a private drive to be taken over by the city, that private drive would have to be brought up to the standards of our regular roads. And if you're going where I think you're going with that, I don't see them putting the money into that private drive to bring it up the code, to be able to dedicate it to the city.
I was kind of looking for that answer, because I wasn't sure what it took, how it was done, and if it was even a viable situation, so.
It is, like when they build an allotment or a housing development or something, they dedicate the road to the city, which then makes it the city's responsibility. But before that happens, it has to be up to code. So it'd be the same incident with the drive there. Now, the area that the city tore up, in this case, in Golf Course Drive, the area the city tore up or the sewer tore up, those will be repaired, replaced, and taken care of. The rest of it is still a private drive, and that is up to the owner to take care of.
The other that came across, and I haven't had a chance to talk to the district director of Fowler, but was drainage of 261, which, once it rains, it's flowing like a river across some private properties and totally why I'm... I believe Mr. Gainer and Ms. Webke also had some similar, but a different area. I just kind of wonder if there's some issues there with our drainages from that general area of 261 that the city needs to deal with, or is this all just private land that we're...
Which part of 261?
It's, I can't think of the name of the business. No, actually, I have it here. It's 3132 Wadsworth Road, and they're asking for an 18-inch pipe to be purchased, and that's on private property. I don't see that we have a responsibility there. My concern is, is there something that the city has done in the past that has led to this? And of course, we've also had some weather changes, which has caused major flooding in other areas, too. So it's a general flooding question. It's not just specifically for this property is what I'm asking. I think Ms. Webke and Mr. Gainer also ran into those this past week. I just wanted to kind of bring that up and see where we are on that. Some of the residents, some of the residents need help. At least, they're asking for help.
I know typically, when it's been private property, the city typically stays out of that. There were some things that they did in the past where, with some ditches in the fronts of houses, but depending where the flooding is coming from, but I can, I'll follow up with Mr. Fowler on it and see what other complaints we have in that area. Is that something new? There was some flooding issues that appear to be because of the widening of 76 there, 224. So, but I'll have them take a look at this and see what, if anything, can be done.
All right.
See if something's changed through there, you know, how long it's been going on or anything like that. on, or anything like that.
I believe they purchased the property around ten years ago, and it's really been much of that time.
Okay.
I believe it was maybe underdeveloped at the time, and they developed it, and I can't say that that was the wisest move, but I'm, I know that it's probably been a lot worse with the weather changes. And this is something that isn't, isn't always easy to anticipate. I think we've lost some businesses down below their house, um, on the side toward the school, on the other side of that creek, that have wiped out, um, tens of thousands dollar, dollars' worth of equipment down there because they located down there not knowing they were gonna be underwater. So it could be just an issue of, or is it not a development, but we have people there.
Uh, any other new business? Topics for next work session, we talked about a couple of them, anything else? Public comments, we have two. Judith Lynn Lee, uh, if you'd please give your name and address to the assistant, and
Judith Lynn Lee, three-two-two-seven Creekside Drive, Norton, Ohio. I, Judith Lynn Lee, come before City Council to address the remarks of Councilman Jack Gainer regarding my request that he, Gainer, as Councilman in Ward One-
If, if you're gonna address council, just address council as a whole, we don't single, single out individual council people. If you want to say Ward One Councilman, Ward Two Councilman, Council, that's fine.
That's fine. I didn't do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ward, uh, Ward One Councilman, uh, reach out to the, who, uh, that he reached out to the young man who was victimized with ethnic intimidation and homeset on fire. According to Barberton Herald Edition dated May twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, uh, Councilman was asked how he felt about my request to Mayor Zeta as mayor, and to him as Councilman, to reach out to this young man in moral support. Councilman in Ward One, while I appreciate your reply that you thought the violent act was a horrible thing to do, and that, uh, and that's just a terrible person to do such a thing like that, and that's not, uh, who we are, those things said are true, but the problem is, it was said to the wrong person. Just as the words flow out of your mouth with the media, they would have been more effective to say it to the victim. What is, what is it about you as coun- uh, council, um, that would prevent you from sharing those heartfelt words with someone who clearly needs them most, who needs them most, someone who morally dehumanized, who was morally dehumanized with, and your ward? Mayor Zeta and other councilmen have already reached out to this young man. Why is this a challenge for this certain Council One individual? Your vulgar statement about not going to blow smoke up nobody's, you-know-what was distasteful and disrespect to your city and to the victim as well. You said you didn't reach out to this young man because you didn't know him. Yet you found no problem in going on door, or shaking hands, and smiling in faces of people in your ward. Some I'm sure you have never met when you wanted votes to get where you are. You had no problem making, in making telephone calls for votes to get in the seat you're sitting, but I don't feel this man is worthy of a telephone call or a knock on his door to simply say, I'm sorry, uh, this happened to you, and what can I do as your Ward One Councilman? Reaching out to this man at this time of the incident, or even when asked if you will be willing to do, reaching out to this man at the time of the incident, or even when asked to do, uh, if you would be willing to do so, would have made you worthier of the seat you're sitting in now. When you raised your hand to take the oath swearing to do what you do best, will do best to uphold your ward, that did not just include paving roads, putting in sewer lines, and septic tanks, or fences around cemeteries. It includes reaching out and taking on every situation that affects the citizens of your ward. Saying you didn't go to him because you didn't know him is a cowardly and insensitive remark, and I hope you would be better than that as a city leader. Lastly, your statement that you don't want to drag the situation out because it's not good for the young man or for the city, my reply to you is that you don't get nothing done by sweeping dirt under the rug. Untreated wounds don't get healed. Doctoring and strong medicines are the best treatment. This man's wounds will heal better with words of positive and uplifting actions, not words of vulgarity. Show your community that you are better than that. Straighten up and act like a councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, uh, Joe Casey. Please give your name and address to the stenographer, and you have five minutes.
Joe Casey, thirty-one forty-one Minorry Drive. I just had a few questions about the speed camera, but they were all answered. Thanks.
Oh. That's it for public comments. No further business to be conducted, this meeting's adjourned eight twelve.